I would like to lend this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aaron, would you like to do a roll call?
Yes.
Greg Gordon?
Yo.
Steve Bartol.
Here.
Michael Snyder.
Here.
Michael George.
Here.
Steve Carter.
Brendan.
And first up is approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. I say it again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, approval of the minutes. Now we have two copies. Has everybody had a chance to look at them to make sure that they are correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's do both.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes from January eighth meeting. I say it again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. Okay, I'm gonna have a little statement here I wanna read. Hello to the Board of Trustees, staff, and constituents. We have a packed agenda tonight. With all of our goals to complete, we must fill each board meeting with a lot of action. I'm happy to say that the agreement with Como Connect has been finalized. We welcome them to our village. We are in talk with other builders that include housing, uh, so more to come on that. Tonight, we will vote on zoning changes that include increasing housing for the village, which is a good thing. Our plans to repair streets will begin soon with a detailed outline and soon to be purchased equipment. I am pleased with the results of a very detailed budget plan that needed much work. Mr. Roth has worked diligently to realign our budget by making sure our reserves and balances are reported correctly and our debt obligations are clear to the board. Having said that, we will go into 2025 with a conservative budget and begin using the capital we have available to improve our village. This includes giving the public works the equipment and manpower they need going forward. Our police department is in great hands with Chief Craig constantly upgrading equipment and bringing the department up to date. He will soon be seeking qualified persons to increase our patrolling. Overall, we have had a successful nine months filled with improvements to the village as well as being completely transparent, as well as following the laws of the state. I am pleased with our progress and I hope our constituents are too. We have much good news coming soon. Tonight, you will hear how quickly we are moving to update and improve the village. Please contact any persons on the board if you have questions, comments, or suggestions. We want to hear from you. And remember, this is your village. Participate by voting April second. Before I move on, I'd like to ask everyone here, would it be possible for us to move the March meeting to the Tuesday rather than the Monday? If everybody is okay with that? We have a conflict and, uh, I wanna give you plenty of time to look at your calendar, see if that's gonna be okay? Everybody okay with that?
What's the date you're calling?
Uh, same time, 6:00 PM, but rather than, uh, March 11th, I think, it's March 12th, which is the Tuesday. Okay?
6 o'clock?
6:00. You okay with that, Scott?
Make my number.
Yep.
Gotta post it.
We will post it, yes. You will post.
Yes, I will post it. I'll be here for that. Alright, um, moving on, visitors' comments. Do you have any visitors that wanna make comments?
Should we stand up?
Sure. Tell us your name and what your comments are.
Guys, my name's Jeff Gethard and I'm a resident here in Sunrise Beach. I know some of you and I'm anxious to meet others. Um, recently, we found out some information about the operation of the Sunrise Beach sewer plant again by Captain Rahm's, not to belabor that, but I think it'd be a good neighbor. The issue was, guys, that we found out that according to the permit issued by DNR to operate that plant, we can turn off the UV trough and not treat for bacteria before it's released in the E-fluent down the hill through my neighbor's property, through my property, even to the lake. Um, those lights and that apparatus turned off in the off-season, the non-recreation season like the Ozarks. And I think it'd be a good neighbor and a nice thing to do to go above and beyond what is required from the state and to treat that E-fluent before it's released into the environment. That's the only piece I really have. I know that we had kind of some contentious relationships with the last board and I love the new board. I think it's great. And I think this would be very minimal expense, would offer a lot of protection and go to kind of repair those relationships and trust.
After you brought that up to us, Steve and I, uh, went over that and to be more educated on this whole disinfectant and the permits. Steve pulled both permits so that I could visibly read them and see exactly what they say about that and everything. And I reported back to Steve after I spoke to DNR because I wanted to figure out what is the deal with that. So Steve, if you'd like to address that, that'd be great.
Um, yes, and, um, of course, Susan talked to DNR, not myself. Um, the current permit that we have for both plants, the south and north plant both, do not require us to disinfect from October 1st to April 1st. And I believe Mr. Gethard is suggesting that we in fact disinfect during that timeframe. And we haven't, excuse me, I have a little bit of a cold, so, um, we haven't analyzed to determine the exact cost. It would be more operational costs. Uh, there'd be some electric costs associated with that. Um, in my opinion only, um, we have two plants and I don't know how you could reasonably, um, turn a disinfection on at one plant and not the other. And so I do recommend that whatever decision is made, be made for both plants. So again, I don't have a, uh, an exact cost of what that would be. As you know, we contract with, they go to, uh, excuse me, they go to environmental for, uh, operator services and there would be some addition, um, obviously they would be doing work that right now they don't do. And then we'd also have those additional, uh, electric costs as well. So. Yeah, I mean, there's maintenance, you know, you gotta keep them, sure. I mean, you gotta keep them clean and so forth. Now Susan spoke to DNR, um, and, you know, our permit, um, and maybe you can address this more directly, but, um, you know, we were notified by them that we could, there's no, under our permit, we could disinfect in the off-season. Now, obviously, there's a reason why they're not requiring us to do that. And I can't speak to that. I mean, it's a Department of Natural Resources issue, ultimately comes from the federal government, you know, that our sewer permits, are really governed by the feds and then they come down through the state ultimately to us. But, um, the, the, of course, April 1st is kind of just around the corner, um, where we will begin disinfecting again. Um, so.
You know, I, I think we will have more conversations on this. When I spoke to the, actually, I believe was her name, uh, who was the agent at DNR who actually wrote our permit, and I explained to her the, the comments about why do we turn them off and this and that, she said, "Oh, I get this all the time." She said she takes calls every day from people out there that are saying, "Why aren't they disinfecting?" and this and that, and about the E coli and all this. And one of her comments to me was, "They would literally have to drink that water on a daily basis for months to get any illness from it." Whether she's correct, I don't know. I didn't question her, her intelligence about that. But one thing we will do is look at that. We do have plans for that plant anyway as far as not being as full and used as it has been.
Right.
Um, and we've even had other discussions about whether we even need that plant there.
Well, and, and I, and thank you for that. Um, I think the board is aware. That is the plan in phase four. We've hired an engineer to evaluate that later today. There'll be a resolution, um, to authorize the application for SRF funding. And yes, the idea is to decommission that plant, to, you know, move it out. And then the other point is, any cost that we incur, obviously, ultimately is paid by our village payers and our customers, our users. And so, um, you know, whatever additional cost there may be, um, we would have to either do one or two things. Either raise rates, which I don't think would be necessary, I don't, um, but over time, certainly all these costs that, um, or just obviously assume it is a, um, one more additional cost and so forth. So we often are pressured, you know, Aaron and Dyer are both here, um, from customers who complain that our rates are too high. So, um, and our rates are reasonable. I've done some, um, analysis recently, at least in the lake area. Our, our, our rates are among some of the high, higher rates you see. So, you know, we, we, we feel, um, a real need to keep rates where they're at and not try to, you know, increase them. They haven't been increasing quite some time, but, so.
But just to assure you again, we are on top of it. We are trying to see what the different options are and everything. So, I mean, I understand the fear. I do.
I appreciate that. Just wanna start the conversation. It seems the permit's suspect. We treat for bacteria for tourists, but we don't treat for bacteria for our own. That's what that says.
I, I understand.
So, as long as we start the conversation, that's what I came down for. Thank you, guys.
You got it.
I draw your roads. I'm sorry, I'm gonna miss it.
You know, we are, we only have like a month before we turn back on. And then, and I don't know how fast we get this done, but I wonder if it's the cost of operations, keeping on all year for your safety. So, I will tell you also that when they got into EB2, uh, and they said that the state's DNR is gonna shut down EB2 because there's too much E coli, and they actively studied it for five years, had a cost of about $150,000. We found that there was too many Es.
Es, yeah, that always, it's always the birds.
Always the birds.
But this is, we're dumping it right down the hill. It's uncertain. Yeah.
Yeah.
Cost. My hope would be that we, when we unwinterize and start for the season, we just don't turn at all. And it's not gonna be that long before we cut that plan anyway, so it couldn't be too much.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna get into it.
But, and, and just to that point, I'm happy to provide that cost. I think it'd be good for all of us to understand what that is.
Right, right.
Um, and right now, I don't know.
Alright, that's what I'm trying to say.
Alright, I'll get down to it, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we're on up to presentations and preventative pavement maintenance plan, and I am assuming you are Dave Christiansen?
I am.
Yeah, I'll give David a very brief introduction. We engaged these guys, Cochran, um, I think in November. And so, of course, they've been doing some work. We're still at the preliminary phase. He wanted to give the board a presentation tonight, so you can see where we're at so far and making sure everybody's kind of on the same page. And then, um, start the decision-making as to what we do wanna do yet in this year. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I'd like to do first is just talk a little bit about pavements and then we'll get into specifically what we're thinking of the Sunrise Beach. So asphalt, what is an asphalt pavement? Asphalt is made up of, um, sand, rock, and stone, and the oil, um, is to glue the holes together. Okay, so that's why, you know, it comes out hot, it's three hundred something degrees, then it gets compacted. You have a mix of aggregate and stone and sand, and that's what makes your asphalt. It's black because you have good, fresh oil. So what happens over time is that because of the environment, because of the sun, um, because of the tires, it's also shown right here. What happens over time is the, the top skin, the top oil starts to wear off. And that's where your, your asphalt pavements start to turn gray. It's called oxidizing. And what that is, oil's coming off and it's the limestone aggregate. That's, that's the rock, which is white. Um, that's why it starts to turn gray, called oxidation. So when that happens is, um, your skin comes off, the, and, and here's an example in Cannon Pass. So here's an example of an oxidized pavement. You know, it's first painted, it'll start black. The limestone aggregate underneath it is getting worn off. So what's gonna happen here is that the, um, when the top skin comes off, uh, you're gonna get these micro voids and then the moisture is gonna start to penetrate. And because we're in Missouri, we get around a hundred and so free staws throughout the year, unlike down south or up north, goes back and forth. So those free staws and those voids start to, um, break up the pavement. And so what we wanna do is we want to, um, try to stop that somehow or prevent that or retard that. That's our, that's our goal. That's why we use the word preventative pavement maintenance. So that's what's going on with your asphalt pavement and that's what we're doing. So if you don't do anything and just let the road go, free stop, free stop, free stop, start with little micro voids, cracks, bigger cracks, potholes. It's really starting to seep in now and you have failed pavement and it starts to really go. So that's an example. Deer Valley Road and, and Sunrise Beach. So, just as far as maintenance goes, um, you know, just the way we talk about it is there's the, the routine maintenance. Again, that's your, uh, street sweeping, trash collection, your, uh, striping, restriping your pavements. There's reactive, which is what happened. I saw actually on Deer Valley, you guys had some potholes. That's reactive, so in the wintertime, we're throwing coal mix in out there and it's freezing cold for our potholes and they pop out again, so we fight that all the time. Then the other thing we, we wanna do is, is try to get ahead of the game here. Here's our preventive pavement maintenance type of things. Let's try to get that, let's try to get it before we have reactive, before we have potholes, before we have issues out there. And, uh, uh, I guess I'm kinda saying the same thing. I have a little graph. This, this is kind of some slides I have, just to kind of bring people on what's going on. If you have any questions, we can find that out too, but, um, here's really a little, that's what I'm talking about. Time versus pavement condition. Once your, uh, once your pavement starts to go, it goes fast, you know? Once it stays good for ten years, pretty good, okay, you're not doing crack filling, you're not doing anything, but then all of a sudden, it kind of goes quick and all of a sudden, whoa, now we have a mess on our hands. So what you wanna do is, we're gonna go over our, uh, let me talk about this real quick here, 'cause I have another graph coming up. Um, so, we wanna, we wanna attack this thing and again, we know that you guys have a lot of new funds, all communities do. Uh, there's numerous types of treatments that can be done. Uh, we just did a pavement plan for Old City Beach a few years ago. They're a couple of years into it, so I'm familiar with the Lake Typeras. I've done city stuff. I've done, you know, City Pacific. So there's different ways of doing things. I'll get into that here in a second. Because what we're trying to do, there it is, what we wanna do is we want to, as the pavement starts to get bad, wanna do something to make it good again. And then kind of go ahead like that. We don't ever want to come down here where it's very poor condition and complete rebuild, that sort of thing. So that's kind of the idea in the back of my mind on what we're, what we're trying to do here. So, um, again, from that and then we'll target future, um, deterioration. Um, I'm saying the same thing over and over again. I need to redo so many slides and get more efficient with it anyway. Okay, so what am I trying to say here also? Now, this is actually in the case of, of Sunrise Beach. Your pavements are all in, well, we'll talk about it more, but we wanna look at it from sometimes doing the worst first scenario or not doing it that way. Our plan tonight that we're kind of proposing is kind of worst first type deal on, on tonight, you know? And we'll talk more about that here in a second, but, um, but yeah, the goal is to be proactive, stop potholes before they start and stretch reconstruction down as far as possible. So, um, what we did is we went through and we looked at all the, uh, roads in the city. You gotta kind of assess where they're at, um, and look at what are the appropriate levels of maintenance that need to be done. And we documented everything, taken pictures, and we have an inventory of everything to try to come up with a plan. So, um, we've also measured all the streets, inspected everything, and that way we can estimate what we wanna do. Okay, and then another thing, typically what we do is, is you need to look at, in most cases, residential streets, cul-de-sac type streets, collector roadways, arterial roadways. From a traffic standpoint, how much traffic does the road, does this, does the road handle? In your case, again, Sunrise Beach is a little bit different because Highway 5 goes through and then you have roads going this way, this way, and we'll look at that second. I guess you're like really arterial, well, I wouldn't say you really had any arterial roadways except for Highway 5. The other ones are kind of collectors is what, what I would say, what I would classify. So, um, let's talk about treatment types, what we can do. Again, we're, we're looking at what could be done. Let's look at how long the treatment types could last, how much it costs to do treatments. That's the next thing we need to talk about. So, um, a quick menu of things you could do. You could slurry seal, micro-surface, Nova chip, asphalt overlay, pavement replacement, um, actually, uh, OSA, no, not OSA, yeah, OSA Beach, they do the slurry seal. You guys haven't done the slurry seal here yet, have you? And I'm not recommending any of that right now. Um, unfortunately, I can't recommend a Nova chip for it, which I'm gonna show you here in a second because it doesn't work real well with your streets. I just wanna show you all this. Um, this is again different because we, we learned this in OSA Beach. It's gonna be hard to get a lot of contractors to bid on doing different things. Capital's the one who does a lot of stuff in OSA Beach. I don't know who's gonna be bidding your projects. I'm guessing, uh, that you guys will probably, um, get a few contractors to do asphalt overlay type projects out here. But we can, if you wanna talk slurry sealing, are you guys familiar with OSA Beach with the slurry seal? Let me talk a little more about it here in a second. First of all, crack, crack filling, this is something, I don't know, are you guys doing any crack filling at all in your streets?
We've talked about it to my dollars, but we haven't.
Okay, so this is something that, that you guys should really think about and talk about. It's something that should be, look, every roadway should get someone coming through, their city staff or contractor every couple of years, filling cracks. That's something you guys should really think about, something to do for sure, no matter what we decide tonight or anything. And that's just something for that and pavement maintenance, okay? Chip and seal, that's another option. A lot of cities don't do that. It's something we could do, I don't know if you're familiar with that. That's when you put the oil down, the aggregate on top. It's done on a lot of country type roadways, um, county type roads. I'm not so sure that would be something I would recommend here. I didn't know if you guys had any experience with that. Talk about it. I'm not recommending much of that. It's kind of old technology.
What's the difference? Cause Rahm is doing the micro.
The micro?
Yeah. What's the difference between chip and seal and the micro?
Okay, so, so let's, so the slurry seal, the first one was the slur, the first one is the slurry seal, which you're used to on parking lots. That's really just putting the oil back on in your parking lot. The problem with slurry seal for, for cities, unlike you guys, would be the cure time. The cure time on that is at least 24 hours. So it's real hard to shut down the roads for 24 hours.
Instead of put it on your driveway.
Yeah, it'd be something more, there's no aggregate in it really, just a long cure time. Chip and seal, so then the next thing would be chip and seal. You put the oil down, then you throw the loose rocks on it, and then, um, you sweep it up after they, you roll it, and then you sweep up the loose rocks. The issue with that is very dusty, very dirty, cars are on it, rocks are flying, wind chills are breaking, you guys are getting called. A lot of cities don't do because of that. So then what they came up with was, um, micro-surfacing, micro-surfacing. This is something that was more of a, um, quicker cure time, 48 hours. It, it came down with, with, um, oil aggregate, but it was, they had the, uh, what do you call it? To make it cure quicker and better, okay? It was great. This was great about 15, 20 years ago. I was in Clayton at the time, longer than that actually. It looked really good going down, but the problem was it started stripping. So this is actually, and it started stripping. So, you know, there's your oxidized pavement underneath, right? Your slur, your micro-surface on top looked great for the first few years, but then it stripped off. So then the residents are going crazy because it looks aesthetically terrible. When, in, in actuality, you didn't hurt the pavement, but it doesn't look good. So I'm not a fan of micro-surfacing at all. Contractors coming out with new things all the time. Again, to get into this more of a micro-surfacing, chip and seal type situation. Again, out here, we have to look at, and, and your roads are in condition, and, and the road needs to be in pretty good condition to do it, okay? So on a scale, like a pavement condition index is typically 10 is, is great, perfect, and 1 would be complete failure. You'd wanna be doing these, these slurry sealed, chip and seal, micro-surfacing, unlike, uh, 6 or above, 6 or better. Your roads, most of your roads that we're talking about are worse than that. So we're gonna have to come in with a lot of pavement repair. It just, it just doesn't make sense. It just won't work. So, um, so then there was Nova chip. So Nova chip's something the state's doing. It's pretty popular. It's, it's, it's more than your chip and seal. It's better than your micro-surfacing. It's an ultra-thin asphalt overlay with track rock aggregate in it. Works really good. But the problem here with that is that it takes a special machine, which, which are huge. You have tree issues out here. You have windy roads. Uh, we tried bidding in OSA Beach a couple of times and the contractors wouldn't come out there and bid on OSA Beaches because of the kind of roads you guys have here. So unfortunately, I have great news for you guys, a bunch of options. I just wanted to show you, there's a lot of options, not that anybody's gonna come and bid any of our options, unfortunately. So we've already learned the harder way on what you guys are gonna get. Um, so in the Nova chip, it does. It works really good. Huge machine, works great, but I don't recommend we do that here. I didn't wanna bring it up, so someone brought it, like, "Hey Dave, why aren't we doing Nova chip?" I know all about it and I think it's great. I just don't think it's gonna work here. Like on Highway 5, for sure. Highway 5 would be a perfect Nova chip job and that, that's been recently, it looks like about a year or two or three, gonna happen.
About six months.
Six months, okay. So in about eight years, what they probably will do is Nova chip. That's what they should do. They probably will, instead of, instead of milling it and overlaying it, they should probably do that before there's any potholes or anything. And again, in the meantime, they should go through and if there's any cracks developing, they should fix the cracks. You guys don't have that situation here yet, so that's just a Nova chip. That's really good. So what we're talking about here with you guys pretty much is, in most cases, well, I guess in every case I can think of, I had, pavement repair, some milling, edge milling, and then asphalt. So I think everybody's familiar with what we're talking about here. I just have pictures. So here we are. Here's, here's Sunrise Beach.
Hey Dave, I just, um, I know you and I haven't spoken about chip and seal too much, but I think when you first came here, started inventory your streets, there, there were at least like a few candidates, right?
Yeah, 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 we can, we can, we can talk about it. We can, we can get into that. I think, uh, well, let's, it's just, it's, it's good that you saw that, think about it, and we can go to that. But until we decide what we're doing first, like, yeah, and again, it's, it, and that's why I wanna meet with everybody to kind of get the discussion started, talk about what we can or can't do, because then it'll set the path on if we wanna chip and seal. I mean, theoretically, Steve, you said, "Hey Dave, what we should do, maybe just a chip and seal project next year." Okay, let's look at what roads we get it and see if you really wanna do that. So let's just, yeah, let's, let's see what we got now and then we're gonna come back. So anyway, I know you guys have the map here. I brought some maps of city limits, just to give everybody a feel for the city. I can just, I got some handouts here, cause I just, I know you can't see these maps. I just wanna hand some of these out for you so we can get perspective. I know you guys know your roads, or maybe you're not familiar with all of the sections of it. Chief, you want one?
No.
You know, it resides on you. Okay. So then, so that's hard to see. So what we did, I did, I wanted to break it down and to show you guys what roads are your roads and what roads are private. And the private roads are, are the ones labeled in blue font, and the other roads are the ones you guys need to maintain. Steve, there you go. So, so those are your, those are based on what you have. These are your roads and that's what we got. So. What we, what, what the next sheet I'm gonna show you is kind of the plan on a spreadsheet and, and what I wanna, I guess really, in this case, it doesn't matter a whole lot. But one thing to consider, keep in mind, the more, the bigger project we create, the better unit price you're gonna get. Cause we're gonna bid it by the ton and by the square yard. The bigger the project, the better price you're gonna get. So, and then also, um, bidding in the wintertime, which we're kind of losing that advantage right now. You get a better Which we're kind of losing that advantage right now. You get a better pricing too. So keep all that in mind. So I guess the way Steve and I have been talking around our second round here. The plan kind of, um, I'm trying to make a big project and be the best at that pricing. So here is. Here is. Skip this to you, so then we can start talking. Again, this is not, this is a practice thing. This is an idea. This is a draft. Schedule. I have a map to show you what that would look like in a second with numbers. There is a bottom number there on, on 2024. I know when Steve and I first started talking, Steve had said he was thinking 450 would be the number. That's more than that. We can move things around. And then just to make it easier for you with this map, that's the next sheet. Um, this one I color coded to really give you an idea of what that's going to look like. Again, you can change all this. So here's, here's the first from 2024 in red. You can see 2024, there's your, there's your four roads. And that's kind of just the way I was wanting to present it. When we do come up with our final plan, to me. I like to follow it with a map and color coded to show people real easy and simply kind of what it would look like. So. Right now. What we're showing here in 2024, we're at 613. It's a little more than what Steve had, was starting with. We can move things around. Again, we. This is what we're showing. Um, Steve, I don't know if you want to start weighing in on why. You know, Deer Valley Road, you saw that. It's a mess. It needs to be done for sure. Um, Castle Garden Road. The ones in 2024, 25, 26, 27, all need to be done. They all do. So it's kind of now a question of looking at traffic patterns. I don't want to use the word politics, um, but there is. There's different ways we could go about this. So. Yeah, why don't you jump in, Steve?
Okay, yeah. So um Deer Valley Road is obviously, it's one of the main arteries, collectors at least. Um, and that section of road, especially near highway five, is in bad condition. Um, the number here actually would improve the road all the way down to, um, I believe to the lake road. Is that right?
Wherever, I, I'm showing it to your city limit. That's why I want to have your city limit map there. I don't think it goes all the way. And there are signs. Yeah, it is a sign. It's right, it's right at the beginning of the campground almost there. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yep, yep, right there by the campground. That's where you go, Steve, to the campground, which makes sense.
You get almost of that first.
Who's capture west does it? Is that a what did it for? The county?
County, county.
Camp, okay, okay. Yeah, so yours would go to the campground, right? And that makes sense, because there is a lot of traffic on there, yeah.
Castle Garden, one of the reasons it's on the list, the way it is, is that obviously there's been a lot of sewer work done. Up there, you know, once you get up into the, up the hill, so to speak, and that section of road definitely needs to be addressed. Um, the balance of Castle Garden, once you start, um, you know, where Castle Garden, I guess, starts off the city, you know, it's a bit of a new way.
Yeah.
Um, you know, as it comes down the hill and so forth, that section is not so bad. Uh, there is a major failure though, right after you turn off.
Yeah, you're right. And, and. And, and just in general terms, I have been doing this type of work with Dave for many years and. If you can, it is, in my opinion, it is better still to do the entire length. Um, and then it's just done. As opposed to just doing, you know, a little Band-Aid. Oh, this is the worst section, so let's just. We have limited funds and so let's just put the money there to fix the worst section. The other part of the roadway is, it's still going to be an issue. And in my experience, it means you start kind of chasing it a little bit. Cause what you do, if you do like a section. Then you got a butt joint, a butt joint. You did construction on this section, construction on this section. You're, you're wrecking the pavement next to your hatch and then you will be back. You will be back in a few years. You'll be back. Hatch and potholes at that, at that butt joint. The, the fewer butt joints you put in the project, the better and it just, you're done. And we can stripe it that way. Remember we're going to stripe it tonight too.
Um, the difficulty in, in making judgments between road A, B, C, and D is there, some of there are in the same category. They really are. And so um it is tough. It's going to be tough for you all ultimately to determine what we, we do want to prioritize. Um, you know, Cliff Lane is another one. A lot of sewer work being done along Cliff Lane. Uh, you know, it would be, in a perfect world, we go, you know, address that one in the near term. Uh, but there is only so much money to go around. So, you know, again, as Dave says, this is draft. You know, we just, we want to bring it forward to you now, you know, get feedback and then ultimately. Hopefully by next month, we can kind of land on the actual roads that we do want to address within this season.
Cause what you could do, I'm, I'm thinking about the slurry seal we're talking about. You can't slur, you really can't slur. You don't want to slur on any of your roads. I can't think of one that's. Good enough to, maybe American Legion, maybe. Um, but so, you know, so you do Car, Castle Garden Road and 24th correctly. And then in 15 years, you know, you crack fill it, you crack fill it, you crack fill it, and then 12, 15 years, you're slurrying. That would be ideal. That'd be a great thing to do. But right now I'm not seeing, I'm seeing. Paving repairs, paving, I'm spent, you know, we're spending your money for the next five years. We're not even able to get into slurry seal or anything. True preventive pavement maintenance for a while unless you guys, you know, you, you see the numbers at the bottom there in yellow. Um, it's all about, I guess, how much you can spend per year. Um, you know, we just kind of go from there. It's an iteration. I mean, I've done this with cities where we gone back and forth. Six different times, trying to come up with a plan that works for everybody and everything. So. But what, the, the good thing is, once we figure this out. You know, you're kind of done. It's, it's kind of, I would just post it on the wall and. This is what you're doing. Here's what it's going to cost. And just, some cities do that on City Fest, since they did the plan I put together for them. They did it 15 straight years, just bang, 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 bang. And then I redid it for them again 15 years later and. It really looked great. I mean, the city, there, there was no potholes in the city because they kept up with it. So. And then some cities have sticker shock and. Stop right now. Don't do anything and then, you know.
Is there, uh, Steve, have you checked, is there any type of grants? That we could add to our already transportation funds that would help us uh accomplish all of them?
Um, yes and no. For this type of work, no. Generally speaking, uh, we're really not aware of any, of any grants that would, you know, address. What we would call just sort of regular annual maintenance. Now, there are grants that may address specialized areas. Uh, typically safety, uh, there are grants that attach, you know, that relate to safety. There are grants that relate to sidewalks, other paths, uh, recreational paths and so forth. But in, you know, good old fashioned, the annual street maintenance work, yeah. And, and let me just say one other thing. Obviously, I am somewhat new to the area here. Just because I'm not aware of that, doesn't mean we're not looking and will continue to look. I'm really not sure, when I don't have a lot of experience in this, how MoDOT distributes funding to the local agencies. Um, where I came from, there was a metropolitan planning organization, there was annual grant applications, you know, you could get used to those sponsors. In this area, I'm just not aware. I don't think that MoDOT does that.
Well, they first have to be classified eligible federal funds. And these roads don't carry enough traffic to classify with federal funds. That's why I looked at the map. There's no federal fund. There's nothing available except for highway five. That's the one I ran. That's the only one you guys got. And the reason is, you know, you don't really have any true arterials. If you look at your city, you know, roads go this way and dead end. And no way you're going to get money for a cul-de-sac or a dead end by the way. If it was a true arterial collector, maybe you have a chance with like a 5,000 car count or something like that, but. It's just, you just don't have it. It's, I mean, if they want CDBG, um, it. It's probably not going to happen with CDBG funds.
They just announced today. Um, closing the toll booth. April 30th. Where we cross. Uh, uh, the lake. And uh, that's going to create on five, a lot of traffic. And they had, we had a map downstairs at one time. It showed where the new F and TT would be. Um, it's, you know, where doctors, landscapes, nurses, doctors.
Down.
TT. It's off TT and uh. And it's crossed from. Anyway, the toll booth closing is going to drive the traffic way up on five. And off of five would be people traveling on our roads, city roads. So we're going to have to do addresses in some way.
I know, I understand what you're saying. We don't have an arterial road that are all dead ends, cul-de-sacs, the end in a subdivision. They don't have any, other than five, we don't have any other roads. Five and TT are going to be the most traveled.
Right.
Let's take them and TT, yeah, the traffic on that road coming up is going to quadruple up here. As soon as that toll goes away. I own a small business just outside of, uh, not in the city itself. But I've had customers come to me, because I have a unique clientele. And they would come over to my business if they didn't have to pay a toll. The toll goes away, neighbors.
Really?
Yeah. So we are going to.
That saved me two bucks a buck.
But I own a gym, I own a gym. And especially as a strong man and a hard people, and it's a really unique niche. And the strength that links from the other side of the lake, the only way to get here cost effectively is the toll bridge. The toll bridge goes away. I'm sorry, the cost of the toll goes away. Bridge is going to be there. So we are, I could see a huge increase in traffic, but not on.
It's not going to be on your, on your.
No, I live on, I live on Eddie. I live off of Eddie.
Yes, I can affect you at all.
No, no. The only people that go down Eddie, the people.
They live on Eddie and that's the problem. It's just not a high traffic.
I think so.
I think he, what he was talking about was the old MoDOT plans to cut through, cut MM through Frank and Louie property.
Yeah.
And MoDOT's banned all that. They said they're not interested in it.
My, my question is, I've seen the chip and seal. And I've seen the uh asphalt overlay. What, the milling and overlay, what's the, the timeframe? Cause you, like you said, a lot of these arterial roads that we're going to have done. There's one way in and one way out. So what is the effect on the residents?
It's an inconvenience during, during that paving day.
Every paving, the project doesn't need to be a fair to go.
That day.
It doesn't matter. But like, like I said, I live down Eddie. You live on your map, Eddie's only, that's it. We're getting back. Um, so.
But it's pretty long.
It is.
Yeah.
And it does this. You're right. It does this. So. When you decide, hire you to go down Eddie. They're going to mill off so much, right? And they're going to overlay it. With hot asphalt and roll it.
Yep.
When they're done with rolling it, it's done.
Yep.
They're gone.
Done, done.
With the chip and seal, what was the timeframe you set on that?
Well, the chip and seal, the chip and seal, the slurry seal is 24 hours. So, so OSA Beach somehow.
Do you still have to mill it before you put that down?
No, 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 not at all. That would just be a skin. So, but you guys. These colored roads we're showing right here, I would not recommend. Maybe American Legion, you. Now, if you want to do it now, but they're in such bad shape that you don't want, they're not, they're, they're. Too bad to do.
They've done chip and seal in the Eastwood. It lasted about six months.
Yeah. Yeah.
First thing. Chicken seal is really hard on snow removal equipment and.
Yep.
I don't know that personally.
I, I would recommend if you do anything, I think you guys would do slurry seal like OSA Beach does. And then you can go look at it. And see what they do. I can tell you what year they did it. You can see how long it lasts, how it, how it does. Because again, slurry seal.
But what's the dry time on that?
The cure time on that, the one, the respect they're using out there, um, they're doing half at a time. So. They're, they're, they're able to make it work in OSA Beach, so we'd be able to make it here, work here. What I'm saying is, is you're not even close to that situation yet. Maybe in five to six years, we should be thinking about doing a slurry seal. Right now, what we need to do is pavement repair. Milling, full width or edge milling, depending upon the situation. Um, wedge course down to even it out and then a surface. Two and a half and two inch surface course. That's where you're at with these colored roads right now. And then, and then we would. You know, I would recommend putting striping, stripe these roads so better for safety. And just be done with that road, like Eddie Road is done now. Now, your problem with Eddie Road is I'd like you to go out there. After maybe two or three years and check for cracks, do the cracks film. Buy it and again, two years later, check for cracks, film. And then maybe in.
And that would be something that our city group would do.
Yeah, you would, either, either you guys would do it or a contractor do it. And then maybe in 12 years. We would do a slurry seal on Eddie Road. So ideally, fix it, pave it, stripe it. Crack fill it every couple of years, crack fill it, keep it great, no potholes, no nothing. Once it starts really oxidize out, uh, and we do a slurry seal. And then you're putting that skin back on and then wait a couple of years, crack fill it, crack fill it, maybe slurry seal again and really push off. Ever coming back and having to really redo any avenue. That's what I'm talking about. That's what I think you need to do, just get it.
Just uh. Are we making sure that we're done with all water and sewer before we're investing in a thing? But that's, and I think it kind of looks to shading that way. And then the other thing, striping the roads. What about when the road's not wide enough for two cars to pass on?
Well, I think, I think, I think what you should do probably is, is edge, stripe the edges for sure. Just that's good, Mike. That's just good for safety in general. Then the question is, do you put an intermittent yellow down the middle? Probably not. I wouldn't. It depends how white it is. Um, if it's wide enough, I think you should do an intermittent yellow to show it. But I definitely think the white edge is great just for safety, just.
And who does that? Who does like the fog line painting? That would be you guys?
I'm not the contractor.
Okay. The contractor that we hired, Dave would do the fog line painting on the edges, the white line.
Yeah, they would do the striping, the stripe. We would have it as part of our project here.
That's part of the, that's part of the bid.
Do what?
That'd be part of the bid then too.
That'd be part of the bid, yeah. Then they would hire some contractors to stripe it, yeah.
What I was getting at is our guys aren't going to have to go out.
No, no. Yeah, you really want, you really want to hire a contractor to just be done with it, yeah.
So David, with uh this, this bid of 613, 717, is that a true quote already?
No, that's not a bid, that's an estimate.
Es.
That is just an estimate that is based on length times width times uh the number I came up with per square yard based on my knowledge of OSA Beach and what I do. That is purely a budget. I would call it a budget.
And the current price?
Using the information I had today, yeah.
So the future price could be higher.
Could be higher.
Could be higher though. It could be higher though.
And we're going to get three competitive bids, so.
Hopefully. You get three. Hopefully. But here's the deal, you're going to bid, so the contractor who is bidding, they, they don't know how many people are bidding, so it's, it's a competitive bid.
Right.
Yes, here, we'll just see. OSA Beach, I can tell you, we don't get very many. It's very difficult to get bids out there. Um, we did highway five in Canton and I think we had, I don't know if we had two bids. Capital got that one.
Capital. Singing Oaks, it's off, Castle Garden is off Singing Oaks. That's a county road.
Castle Garden is?
No. Singing Oaks.
So I have it black up to like 2029. Is that the old, is that wrong? Is that not a county? It is, it is, and city limits maintained by city until you get just past the county shed. Then, then that's kind of what I got. So I, I came, I, I got.
No.
I ran out of colors.
They, they, they have put slurry seal on that two times in the last four years.
And I, I think they do it because of their shed they've done there. It's kind of, it's kind of like Indian Hill Road. Indian Hill Road, they've done some screed patching type. It's rougher than. Yeah. I, it all get up, but they've been putting, they've been patching that and that's, that's our road, but they've been patching it just because they've been doing work. Just past there, kind of trying to help us out.
Okay, sorry. Y'all will save some money. That's close.
You're doing good.
That's going to happen.
What, once we get a little farther along, we do want to get ahold of the county and let them know, hey, this is how we're, you know, approach this. And can we partner with you or there are things in their plans that maybe they want to address, you know, the, the county side of Singing Oaks, for example. Okay? So we, we definitely want to, we don't want to just work in a, in a void. We want to work together.
Because your mobilization cost is a huge, a huge factor. What you were saying earlier, the bigger project you do, which also could be because you're using multiple entities. County and city were doing projects together. You just have one mobilization cost.
Yeah, if you could get the kind of team with you to do some of their roads and make this into a million dollar project. You're going to get better unit price and better mobilization, better everything.
More bids.
Yeah, maybe more bids, hopefully.
There, there was a law firm that gave a presentation a couple of years ago, so I'm playing zoning. And in the state of Kansas City, I've used it for municipal financing for pins. And they came up with a way to lease the roads to the city. And they made a presentation, I can look that back up. I don't think that we, I think we'd make the 613ers, if that's the top. It goes any higher or whatever. But I think we'd come up with this plan.
Yeah, the, the $600,000 is a budget number. So the way this would work is that, um, once we get into the, uh, the details of it and actually did it. You would approve a contract with the contractor for whatever number that is, 550, 650. You would make that decision. Suppose the bids came in terrible, then you would maybe not do one of the roads or something. But this is just a budget, these are budget numbers. It gives you guys a ballpark idea and...
This is a very detailed and good plan.
I've never seen anything like it.
Where are we going from here, Steve?
Uh, good question. First of all, I think we can't do 600,000. I think that's kind of pushing it, but I do think we can do it. And we're never going to know what the true cost is until we actually bid it. Just like Dave said, if the numbers come in high, we can reduce. If they come in low, good for us. As far as the actual road sections, Andy's not here, of course, and he didn't, I don't know. He had an issue, a personal issue. But I would like to show Andy, it's probably works directly to this, and then they, have you, have you and Andy met?
I have not, I'm not.
And then really what I'd like to do is come back, if the March meeting, if they'd recommendation. Here's what we'd like to do for the 2024 project.
It seemed to me like we would have to move pretty quickly on the 2024. We still have to go out for bids and, you know, the asphalt plant's so, so enabled.
The next year.
I think we're probably okay if, uh, because, you know, the asphalt paving season extended to October. And so, and I'm just thinking out loud, Dave, you know, if we did it in, say, April or May, we probably give the contractor like 120 days at least to...
Yeah, I'm not worried about the contractor. I'm just worried about the bidding because the sooner we bid, the better price you're going to get. So, yeah, I wouldn't want to pay, I do not want to pay in October. I want it to be done before October because of leaves and everything, moisture. So, but it's, it's just the bidding. It's just here. It's, it's February already and we're, you know, we're trying.
Do we have any room with the blue lake contract? Cause on Castle Gardens, he's going to have to come back and repair a heck of a lot.
Yeah, and I'd discuss that with, uh, with Tony Cobb. And yeah, there'll be deductions in that contract if we do.
I mean, could you take that money that, the same he's due for his final payment to finish the road repair? Could we take that money and apply it to this?
From a budget standpoint, yes. I mean, you can't take the D and R money, not toward roads, but you can kind of rearrange your budgets. Yes.
Okay.
Good plan, David.
Thank you. Steve, I'll clear the, he helped out too.
No, we work together. We work together. It's...
I've been anxious to see this and this is really well laid out. I'm happy. And I tell you, you know, you make a good point about the toll bridge and all that and all the traffic that's going to come here. But the whole reason for all of this is for our constituents, the people that live in the village.
Oh, absolutely.
We have done no road work for God knows when.
Well, that's why we're trying to play catch up now. That's why the first bids, bids are going to be so high.
Show the people here that we're thinking about them.
We have to play catch up and I agree with, I used to work for municipality and, and I agree. Overlaying is the best bet.
Well, it's right here on the...
Cause I've lived through chipping.
Yeah.
No, I, I like the idea.
It's a mess and you do. You get a lot of complaints with chipping. I've lived through it and you get a lot of complaints. Rocks and break, the brakes and disc brakes, they get stuck in them all the time. Windows broken. It really is. The overlay, as long as you keep the maintenance up on the overlay, it doesn't really last as long as...
I think you're right.
By far.
On, on the up road. Capital County Road. They put a different kind of chip and seal than I've ever seen. It was brown.
Yeah.
Really, and it was not rock. It was more like sand.
It's called a clog seal, yeah.
Okay, I don't know.
Yeah.
But it...
Rejuvenator type.
When they were done, it looked really, really good. But the chip and seal on Singing Oaks, they do that every year, every two years.
I do that. So you guys can see that, huh?
Oh, yeah.
His old city, they're hiring me to put together a bid package for chip and seal. And I agreed to do it, put together the bid package, but I'm not doing the inspection. I'm not going to have my trucks out there involved in it because it is, you know, it's not good. I don't want to be associated with it.
I don't like it at all.
Personally, I'd be dead set against any chip and seal, any four months.
Well, this is cool. We'll rehook them from here.
So I think, I think your best bet is kind of cool because you're so close to the city beach. The slurry seal may be an option, but not now. Maybe in five or six or seven years. And you guys can go see it anytime you want, see it done and talk to them. They're, they're the only ones that... They're the only ones I really know that do slurry seal and they get away with it on Osage Beach.
We're going to grind it up and replace it. Might as well get it right with us. Do you ever get Feige down here?
Do what?
Joe Feige out of Kansas City?
No, I, I don't know. I don't remember. I don't recognize that name.
They do a lot of grinding and they, they sell that to Bowen asphalt.
Okay, the millings.
And they probably got $10 million in millings.
Just one last comment. The one thing that I would strongly recommend is, is we must contract with them for construction inspection and construction engineering. And, you know, the comment was made earlier, you know, how are we going to manage people getting to their residences and businesses and so forth? And I've worked with Dave and his crews for years and in some very tight spaces, high density type of developments. And they just do fabulous with that. They really do. They work very well with the residents. They get everybody on the same page. Of course, on occasion you might have a complaint, but honestly, it's, it's really been good. And it's another reason why, you know, I, I recommend that we work with them is, you know, they don't just do the design and then walk away. When the papers come, they're on it. They coordinate with the neighbors and the residents and they really do very well with that.
We'll check the thickness the whole time. We will do loose mix samples to make sure you're getting what we're specing out, which will probably be P2 type asphalt. We will, we have nuclear gauge board, check the density, make sure you guys get the right project. We'll have temperature guns to make sure that it's going down right. You really need a high level of inspection because you're spending a lot of money in one day. And you want it to be right because we don't want to come back and fix it. So...
I totally agree with that.
And that's why I'm not doing the chip and seal inspection in Pacific. Cause it ain't going, it's not going to be good. I don't want to be associated with it.
You know, we're not a part of that.
Hasn't happened a lot, but we've, we've made them take out asphalt before that didn't need spec.
Yes.
I, I totally agree with that, the inspection part of it.
Yeah.
We had a drainage issue on that one in Pacific. We're not going to have that problem here. We're not going to miss you a drainage here. It's, it's going to, you guys are killing it off. We'll get it.
All right. Well, thank you, David.
Okay, thank you guys. Good talk. I'm going to pack my stuff. I'm going to get out of here.
That's awesome. Yeah, let's, uh, let's move along, Steve, unless you've got something else to do. Yeah. The very first ordinance, guys. Let's, let's go ahead and do a first and a second reading on, on this first bill, Aaron. And you can just do the title.
The title, okay.
Go ahead and do the first.
First one, okay. So bill number 2024-01, an ordinance changing the schedule of the fiscal year of the Village of Sunrise Beach, Missouri. Begin January 1st and end December 31st.
Um, are all of you familiar with what we're talking about doing here, the fiscal year?
Or you would have to do a...
First reading, first reading. Motion to, uh, for the first reading and second.
Motion through.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Okay, you go ahead and do the second reading.
Okay. So bill number 2024-01, an ordinance changing the schedule of fiscal year of the Village of Sunrise Beach, Missouri. To begin January 1st and end December 31st.
Now we vote on it?
Right.
Make a motion that we, um, make a motion that we change the ordinance, uh, changing fiscal year to January 1 through December 31st. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you guys still have the rule of hand that I gave you?
Yep.
That's where you were there.
Oh, I know what. Something they're on, you know, that's what I was talking about, how they...
We're going to, we're going to do a roll call on that second reading. It's the second and final.
Okay. Okay, so Greg Warden?
Yes.
Steve Barthol?
Yes.
Susan Schneider?
Yes.
Steve Carter? Michael George?
Yes.
Okay, um. Number B is zoning. This is a zoning change from residential to residential one to two or medium density.
R2, we use two.
So, Aaron, you want to read?
Are you doing first and second or just first? That's right.
So you make a motion for the first reading.
Make a motion for the first reading of this ordinance. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so the first reading, bill number 2024-02, an ordinance approving an amendment to the zoning map of the Village of Sunrise Beach, Missouri. Thereby changing the zoning of Camden County Parcel 002 plus O2 dash 7.0 dash 35.000 point 0 dash 0037 point 001 from the existing R1 single family residential to R2 medium density residential.
Make a motion that we accept that reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion for the second reading. Make a motion to have a second reading of bill number 2024-02. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Second reading, bill number 2024-02, an ordinance approving an amendment to the zoning map of the Village of Sunrise Beach, Missouri. Thereby changing the zoning of Camden County Parcel 002 plus 02 7.0 dot 035 dot 0 dash 00 dot 0 dash 00 37 dot 001 for the beginning of from the existing R1 single family residential to R2 medium density residential.
Make a motion that we adopt bill number 2024-02. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Go ahead, uh, next bill number. I will entertain a motion for the first reading by title only.
Make a motion for a first reading of bill number 2024-03. Second.
Motion has been made in second. Will the court please read the bill by title only?
Bill number 2024-03, an ordinance approving an amendment to the zoning map of the Village of Sunrise Beach, Missouri. Thereby changing the zoning of Camden County Parcel 002 plus 02 dash 7.0 0 dash 35 dot 0 dash 00 dot 0 dash 000 dot 36 from the existing R1 single family to R2 medium density residential.
Make a motion to accept bill number 2024-03. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're going to do a second on all these.
Second, second, yeah.
Motion for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we will vote at the end of this reading.
Okay, so bill number 2024-03, an ordinance approving an amendment to the zoning map of the Village of Sunrise Beach, Missouri. Thereby changing the zoning of Camden County Parcel 002 plus 02 dash 7 point dash 35 dot 0 dash 00 dot 0 dash 0036 from the existing R1 single family to R2 medium density residential.
Make a motion to accept bill number 2024-03. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wasn't there a, a situation, Steve, where you thought on the last one about the subdivision? That we only do a first reading tonight or was that, or is it first and second? Okay.
I think we were just going to check to make sure that wasn't inside and summarize acre subdivision.
Yeah, and I defer to the city attorney here. I asked him to look at the subdivision plat. For sure, what was submitted is not ready. And often, at least in my experience, there's been final plat ordinances, which, and this one is written the same way, where the, the final document is submitted to city attorney approval. Now, this one is frankly kind of so far away from a final that might merit, just waiting a month. But do you have an opinion here?
Well, it is just a preliminary, if I remember it right. It's just a preliminary plat, not a final, right?
No, it's a final.
I think we should just do one reading and make sure we get it right.
Just one reading tonight on that bill.
Yeah.
Make a motion to...
Make a motion that we do the reading number one to bill number 2024-04. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill number 2024-24, an ordinance approving the final plat of Trump subdivision, a four lot subdivision generally located at the northeast intersection of Beechwood Drive and Old Sunrise Acres Road in the Village of Sunrise Beach, Missouri.
Make a motion to accept. Second. The reading, yes.
You don't have to do that. Okay. All right, um, so that's the end of the ordinances. We've got some resolutions here. The first one, um... And we don't, aren't, we don't read. The resolution 20...
Resolutions are easy. You just read the title and go.
Yeah, resolution 2024-02, a resolution authorizing filing of an application with the Missouri Department of National Resources. Clean Water State revolving fund for the financing assistance under the Missouri Clean Water Act, Chapter 644 RSMO.
Second. Make a motion to accept resolution 2024-03. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, number F, resolution 2024-03, a resolution approving an agreement with MLCPA and Associates LLC for professional services related to the preparation of the fiscal year 2024 audited financial statement. Federal single audit if necessary and other related services for the Village of Sunrise Beach, Missouri.
Make a motion to accept resolution 2024. Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number G, resolution 2024... Okay, number G, resolution twenty twenty-four oh four, a resolution approving the purchase of a backhoe loader for the Village of Sunrise Beach Public Works Department.
Make a motion, we accept resolution twenty twenty-four oh four.
I got a, I got a question I forgot, but it's disgusting. I did the analysis of the lease, and they have conflicting numbers in here. And I think we need to go back to the, get the correct leasing quotes, 'cause it'll match up. Six point nine percent interest is not what we're, what we're looking for.
Yeah, that's not right, you should do that.
No, it's not right. Now, what I don't know is the way they stated the purchase price in their, in the bid, I don't know if that was discounted to a municipal level. In other words, knocking off some money off of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Or, I don't, I don't know that the principal amount is in conflict with the interest at six point nine percent, which is high for a tax-free lease. Did they, have they, they have acknowledged, uh?
Well, have we looked at other options of financing this equipment?
No.
Other than leases?
I'm, I'm for the equipment, I'm not against that, I have a problem with pricing. Lease, if we're gonna lease.
No, so, um, we ask for a purchase price and also lease options through the, um, you know, through the supplier, and that's what we have. So, no, we haven't asked, um, looked into any other types of financing. And I believe, I don't have the resolution in front of me, but I think it's conditioned upon city attorney review and approval. Is there, um, clause like that in the resolution?
Do we have a copy of the resolution?
Yeah. Yeah.
There's a section from the city manager.
Okay.
Okay, it says, uh.
I didn't see it.
The clauses have been solicited through the Source Wealth Cooperative Purchasing Agency, of which the village is a participating member. Norris Sunrise Beach Procurement Ordinance provides for procurement of goods and services through the cooperative purchasing contracts, and the village has canvassed and reviewed the complete proposals and determined a proposal to be the most advantageous.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't actually write a clause in there that specifically requires city attorney approval. Typically, what I like to do is if, if the board does agree with the financing, then of course that whole package is sent to the city attorney for review. Um, and, you know, I would never, you know, I've never entered into a lease agreement without the attorney looking into it. If he wants to seek other types of financing, we can do that.
Sure, you think there's actually a fail. I, I don't think there's any program for that.
I don't think he's saying get a different financing, I think he's just saying that the one that we have has an error in it.
Yeah. Caterpillar Financial has financed the John Deere tractor. And there's another piece that goes to that. Uh, I think it's probably, is it a broom? There's two, there's two items, one's a hundred and forty-three thousand and the other one's a hundred and fifty-one.
Those are two different, um, they're both backhoes, they're just different.
Okay, or different models, okay.
I think Andy wanted to go with John Deere.
Yeah, I think John Deere, it's good service. We got Caterpillar, or the other one, the cat would be out of Columbia. So, I called Caterpillar, talked to them about financing, so we'd be great for meeting, and then the people turned, I called all day. I, I'm not against the equipment, with the equipment.
So, are we holding off on approving this resolution, or do we want to approve it with, uh?
Better. So, financing approval.
Subject to financing.
Well, let me just make sure I understand correctly. Um, the, you're finally buying the equipment, you just want the lease terms to be reviewed and make sure that they are accurate. Yes, I think then my recommendation would be to approve it contingent upon the city attorney reviewing all the lease documents and making sure that they are accurate and completely acceptable.
Got that, Aaron?
Mm-hmm.
So, do we want to make a motion to accept the purchase after the lease purchase is reviewed by the attorney? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I think we're getting it all pretty muddied up and gray. I, I think this is a good job of muddy and water to put to the next meeting.
Do.
I hate to do that.
Do we want, do we want bids on the financing, or at least look at other financing options?
Right, yes, yeah, I agree.
Other than at least the purchase option?
Well, it's a dollar purchase.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't.
It's a, it's a condition, it's a contract, really. It's called a municipal lease, it's tax-free income to them, and at six point nine, he's high. Uh, he also, his figures, his, his annual payments, six payments of twenty-eight thousand dollars, it didn't, doesn't compute to six point nine percent, so I have a credibility problem with the bid. So, how do you want to address this? Do, do you, do you need the equipment then before the next meeting?
No, no.
Then, I say we put it off. Now, I will draw my.
Okay. Uh.
Sorry. No, that's, that's what we're here for.
But what I want to do, though, just so we're clear, I'd like to, uh, intend to get other finance options.
Right.
Uh, we could purchase it in this, you know, have a bank finance it.
I can call you in a B, and they'll give you a quote, maybe that's.
Sure, sure, maybe our banks. Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, what do we want to do, just put, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four oh four?
Table it.
Just table it for tonight?
Yeah.
And, you got that?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, do we have any old business, Steve?
No, I don't think so.
How about me?
Okay, uh, your report, do you have? Do you want to go through?
A couple items, um, so we are proposing the purchase of a new copier, um, for our city hall office. We have two right now, this one, and there's one downstairs. The one downstairs, we only use, um, to print water bills. And this one is our main workhorse, and it serves our purposes, it is a little slow. Um, the scanning functionality is a little clunky, you have to get up and walk back and forth, and I don't, I don't want to overstate it, but it, we do, we just need a more functional unit. And so, we did look, uh, at two different options. One is from Marco Technologies, uh, and then the other is from Evolve Solutions. Uh, Evolve is, uh, our IT firm, Michael Coldwell, uh, also works with Evolve. And so, the pricing is very similar. Um, and upon evaluation, we felt like the Evolve Solutions proposal was, uh, better amended because Mr. Coldwell would be, um, you know, he would, he would network it, he would service it. Um, and we keep it all there, all under one IT network, so to speak. Um, and so, we would, um, and as a recommendation, we are paying a hundred and thirty-one thousand per month, or fifteen hundred seventy-two Canadian right now for the two, um, the two copiers we have. Uh, so, you know, this will pay back in a period of, I think, four or five years. Steve, how long does a copier last? Uh, my experience, um, I've had very good luck, I have typically six, seven, eight years.
Depends on your neighbors.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so, well, this, the, uh, H P unit has a penny of page maintenance, right? Am I reading it correctly?
Yes.
Uh, for black and white, so, and that penny of page includes toners, maintenance on it, cleaning, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, there's no.
Recents for color.
Yeah, the color's cheaper, the black and white print's higher, there's no monthly charge, um.
Do we have any termination on these two? Or will?
I'm sorry?
Uh, these under lease, did you say?
Yes.
Do we have a termination fee?
Um, there's no contract. There's, yes, so, uh, we verified that with the vendor. And so, if, if we were to move on this, then we would have the new equipment delivered and put it in service. And then, of course, uh, you know, we move the old stuff out.
There was no reason to have one downstairs and one up here. I mean, if we can get one right there that does everything, then we're cutting our costs right here.
Please, is this gonna, you have to work with it every day, you three do. Is it gonna fit your wants and needs?
More than.
Oh, yeah. All right, Aaron said, y'all have. I mean, that is, I mean, the H P is a good company and they've got a penny of pages, really, that's pretty cheap even across the board. The other one was point zero zero seven, but there was, there was some other costs on the other end of it, so it balances out. Steve's right, it's six point one half another, you know. H P and then the people, we already have servicing them, now we'll service this.
Right.
So, they already know, if they're doing the network, they already know those machines will, it'll be more of a seamless transition. I agree with the H P.
Uh, we don't have to take a vote on that, it's within the budget.
No, no, you do, anything over five thousand dollars, the board has to approve.
Make a motion to approve the H P copier.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I want to, um, I do want to give you all an update on the budget. Uh, I don't want to take a lot of time, but at least go over some of the main features. Uh, you know, the last thing I want to do is get up and march and say, here's the budget, prove it, so forth. So, I always like to give the board at least two meetings to look at it, and then if y'all want, we can do an actual special meeting if you want to get real adept, and I happen to do that. I really enjoy budgeting, and it's, I think it's just central to our operation. This budget is, you know, it is complicated, it is. And, um, the city's finances have a degree of complexity to them, even though, I mean, it's just water, sewer, general fund, transportation, but how the pieces all fit together, uh, you know, it takes a little bit of time to, to put it all together. So, I just want to hit again the highlights, uh, in the budget document, there's a lot of different information, some of it's still incomplete. Uh, by the time we get to the final budget, there'll be, you know, a lot more info. In general, our tax revenues have been very good, the board's heard me, heard me say this before, our sales taxes at an all-time high last year, our use taxes were also at an all-time high. I, as a, as a rule, I always budget very conservatively. Uh, and so, this year, in fact, I'm, and I'm budgeting for use taxes to actually decline. Why? Because I have, we have information that there were certain, uh, big purchases in the last year that may not be repeated this next year. Uh, and so, and secondly, our use tax revenues, you know, overall just jumped so high, I'm just skeptical that they'll continue. So, uh, I did drop those back a notch. Uh, sales taxes, I anticipated a very slight increase, uh, I think it's maybe a point and a half, I forget. But, uh, our tax, our sales taxes have been very strong, the toll bridge will open almost by, you know, it'll be certain, uh, that it's gonna happen. We do anticipate to see an increase in revenues based on that.
About water taxes, that starting now?
It is, it is, and I budgeted that also conservatively, a hundred and ten thousand. Uh, I've used actual receipts to, to derive that number. Uh, you know, that's such a difficult thing to predict, you know. I, I think one ten is a good budget figure. You know, often in my experience, with a budget low, that we end up getting, you know, exceeding it by something out. But, that's at least what we're, what we're forecasting for this year. In terms of balances, you have to understand where your funds are, how much money you actually have in the bank. Um, our general fund has ended December thirty-first, had about a hundred and ninety thousand, transportation eight oh six, capital improvements one point two million, then we do have some ARCA monies, which we've just been holding. The idea is to use ARCA money for the road project that's coming here.
Hundred and ten thousand.
Correct. Uh, transportation and capital improvements, uh, the transportation in particular is really at, uh, there's a few, there's two different, uh, debt issues that the city did years ago that is being retired with transportation sales tax, but it's fairly limited. Uh, so, we don't have a lot pledged toward the sales, transportation sales tax. So, that would be a good source of funding for the big road project. Capital improvements is a little different, capital improvements is considered kind of part of your water and sewer. So, even though we've built a good balance in capital improvements, I'm a little wary of saying, wow, we got a bunch of money there, let's go spend it. We do have some commitments, the Komo Connect project, for example, we'll have to use some of that, the summer point, uh, homeowners association, uh, water and sewer extension, some capital improvements money will hit that too. So, again, in general, I think our finances are in pretty good shape. The water and sewer is my biggest concern, we'll get to that a little later. Salaries and wages, um, the board, I believe, prior to becoming, had given approval to a fourth officer, is that correct?
What's that?
Did the board give approval to hiring a fourth officer before I was here?
What, historically, what's happened is, we used to have a fourth full-time officer, that fourth full-time position was turned into two part-time positions. Then it turned into one part-time position, and I've always had a part-time position open. And when, uh, our last part-time officer resigned, the board did vote to continue to keep that position open. However, it's been impossible to find a qualified candidate.
So, this budget does include funding, what you see here does include, uh, funding for a fourth full-time police officer. Chief has done a lot of work, um, and very good work, uh, to demonstrate the need. And, you know, if you want to get into the details of that, you can, uh, but I know it's been discussed between, um, Susan and I, and Chief, of course, and we agree, it, it, the budget supports it for sure. Is there a need? Yes, especially at peak periods, uh, so.
Especially with the road increase in traffic.
Yes, uh, there are no other additions in the budget right now, there has been some discussion about another public works employee, but that's, that is not in this budget. Water and sewer revenues, uh, the water and sewer revenues, we are forecasting it to increase because we are adding new customers. But I'm, you know, being very careful with it. We also, as I said, supplement water and sewer with capital improvement, sales tax revenues, and I'm budgeting those. Again, kind of slight increase. In the big picture, water and sewer expenditures versus revenues were more or less breaking even. Uh, why? Because we have some big projects in there, Komo, Summer Point, the end of the Phase Three project, and then we also have a lot of debt service. So, I don't, I've discussed this many times with Susan, I'm, I'm not saying there's a. So, I know, I've discussed this many times with Susan, I'm, I'm not saying there's a problem. I don't think it's a, a big issue, it's just a consideration. We, our water sewer system, uh, is more or less breaking even, and I think that's, that's accurate. Outstanding debt, so there's a whole, there's a whole sheet that shows you where our debt is. And the, and the final budget document will show that each individual debt issue, show those schedules. So, what we have is kind of a summary, but it shows you the exact, uh, amounts that we have. We have three hundred and seven thousand in debt service on water sewer, uh, alone. And then additional, I think ninety-three, that's, uh, basically those road projects, as well as the city hall project. And so, when you think of three hundred and seven thousand in water debt service, that's about one-third of our total revenues, including capital group and sales tax. So, our debt load is getting, uh, I mean, the finance people would say it's probably too high frequently. I'm not, I'm not uncomfortable with it, I think it's manageable. Uh, but it is also getting to a point where, um, you know, we, we're going down the Phase Four path. Can we manage more debt? I think the answer is yes, but only if we can continue to grow customers. And if our sales tax revenues continue to increase. And I think it's reasonable to expect that, I do, but.
What was the increase in sales tax this year? Previous year was twenty-two percent.
I think it was around ten percent. I don't have it right at my fingertips, but.
Sales A news.
Yeah, it's, it, as cautious as I like to be, I am frankly pretty bullish on the local economy. I just think it's pretty strong. I haven't seen any real indications of weakness. The January sales tax payment we just received was higher than maybe in the past four years. Not by a huge factor, but still, it was the highest. So, you know, I think, generally speaking, I think we're, we're doing pretty well. We've added a few, uh, new businesses. And, you know, we certainly wanna see more of that. You know, if we were able to bring in just a few more retail businesses, you know, what might be ten percent last year could have been fifteen percent. So, I think, you know, generally, the speaking is, the trend line is good. Okay, and the capital projects, so, there's a long list here, uh, we don't need to go into any detail, I'm happy to answer any questions. There are certain things that we wanna do. One that I should just note, we own property at Tower Two, off near Doctor's Landscaping, it's one point seven acres. Uh, we have a need for space, right? We, we don't have enough space here for our stuff. And we're, we're looking at trying to take over some of that ground for a new yard. Level it out, put down some rock, maybe some concrete. And so, that is a budget item for the next, next budget year. If Angie was here tonight, you could detail that a little bit more, but I think that is something that we do, we do need.
That the new yard improvement?
Yes.
What about, um, anything on the facility for holding the place cards over there?
No, we've had talks about it, but it's, we haven't put anything in the budget yet. If we can get those under roof for a pretty reasonable cost, I think we can, it's something that we consider. One thing, I, I should mention this also, um, it's kind of related to that. We do wanna have, uh, I am requesting fifteen thousand in planning budget for an architect, sometime consultant, to start the process of, uh, new city hall. And that, not necessarily brand new, it could be renovated. Yes. You know, and there's been a lot of things talked about, and I think that maybe even there were offers made or close to being made in the past. I, I'm not sure. But my rationale is, if we're gonna do something, you've got to have some professional help to evaluate, is this building work for us? Does this site work for us? And, you know, there's been a lot of things kind of bandied about, but I did make a contact recently that, uh, not necessarily went eight days, but it sounds like there could be some, uh, resources available to us for a little or no cost, uh, to assist with this in a general planning sense. And I wanna investigate that. But it's time, if we're, you know, let's stop talking and actually start doing some real work to figure out what it, you know, what it might look like. Fifteen grand's not a lot, that's kind of a preliminary. If you get into actual real design, I think you're talking about, you know, quite a bit of money, but budgets can always be amended, so. And then, yes, going back to Chief, you know, we have, not to steal his thunder, but, um, the Fire District, the Fire District has, uh, been a great partner, and they'll continue to be a great partner. But they need their building, and they gave him a notice just last week that we need to vacate that. Uh, we had been taking a bay of the, uh, Fire District property. So, uh, we are, you know, considering what can we do, what's the best solution for our own vehicles? And if we can put them under roof for, you know, reasonable cost, maybe that'd be a good interim step. We just had it worked out, and your pricing, it's pretty new, so.
How much space can we have over there by Doctors? We've got one point seven acres. You've got one facility? There's a lean-to like?
The only structure there is the wellhouse itself.
Okay. And I, I gotta go over there.
I gotta drop soft.
Can you see that?
Probably not.
It's okay, if we don't have it, we don't have it, I thought there was a facility there.
Well, I don't like the idea of, of just taking the cars apart from somewhere by a plane up here. I mean, I don't think that's.
We need one.
Safe. I think we really need to start working on where we can put them underneath a roof. Even if it's a rental, for short-term, like a bit of a bay somewhere.
Okay, cool. I think that's about all. So.
I do, I do have one question. On our water and sewer, our billing, wouldn't it be feasible for us to distinguish between residential and commercial use and have different billing rates?
Yes. Yes, for sure. I, I've done, I've done some work in, uh, reviewing the rates charged in the area. And our, our rates are on the high side, higher, you might say. But just as, uh, Mr. Carter said, there, there are many communities that charge by the actual meter size. So, if you have a three-inch commercial meter, which is a lot of, you know, it's a big, big meter, that can get up, you know, that bill of charge can be, uh, in the hundreds of dollars. And, you know, that, that meter cost, it's only fair that, you know, there being more of a cost associated with that. And we don't, we don't do that, we just, we charge one rate flat to all customers.
Right, I think we're probably short-selling ourselves on that end for water and sewer, though. As I know, the grabways, they just, they're doing a hundred dollar a month increase on their face.
Yeah, I mean, part of what's happening is our water sewer systems are beginning to be about ten years old, the oldest part of it. And that's when, especially with your meters, you start replacing your meters. And we have, we've had years fail, we had, certainly we had some, you know, cracks and breakages in the big cold snap. But, but even from a, just a straight, you know, normal, uh, setup, we, we have to replace it some meters. And, uh, there's obviously costs associated with all that. And we haven't raised our rates since twenty sixteen on the water side, twenty eighteen on the sewer, I think that's correct. And I'm not proposing we raise the rates, but I am proposing that we look at it, evaluate it.
Right.
And to your point, maybe there's like more targeted things we can do here and there.
Yeah, I mean, like, free gear into a, a restaurant or a bar, you know, anywhere where there's gonna be large groups of people hiding water, you see, you know?
I will say, my experience with cities is, when you kick the can down the road, then you end up with a larger political issue than if you do small increases.
Right.
At a steady pace.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't say we do, you know, a big giant increase, I'm just thinking a small increase between different checks, through residential and commercial.
Yeah, just so, at least to share my strategy, um, the budget needs to be adopted by April first, so, you know, that comes first. The rules and regulations that relate to our water service do need to be revised. And then, there's been conversations recently, it's been a lot of them in here. And then, so, that would be a next step, with which we look at the regulations in general. And, and the pricing, if, if needed, and then we can review that at some point, be later in the year. But, yeah, it's just, you know, one step at a time.
And, uh, month January, hundred degrees, please, front and center, four calls for service, three hundred sixty-nine self-initiated activities, issued twenty-nine citations, sixteen warrants, two misdemeanors. Like Steve and everyone mentioned earlier, so, yeah, we, we are moved out of the fire department. He's letting us park in the parking lot for a very short temporary status. Uh, I've got a security camera on order. I wanna put a camera out there, well, to, where, where at least park in, in that secure lot. We also have security footage, if anything was to happen to those cars. Um, the twenty twenty-three Durango is completed and is in service, began the process of closing out that grant, so we can get that seventy-five percent of the cost back. Uh, been awarded a grant in the amount of, I'm gonna say ten thousand dollars for the purchase of three N-Car cameras. Also been awarded an overtime grant for the purpose of combating DWI fences between March fifteenth and April nineteenth. An amount of one thousand seven hundred fifty, that's gonna come in real handy with pub crawl. Uh, began closing out the twenty twenty-three ARCA grant that made it possible to recoup twelve thousand five hundred that was spent on the charger, twelve hundred ninety that was spent to re, on purchasing desktop computers, and fifty-six hundred to purchase another handheld radio. The thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety for the charger and computers has been paid out. The radio was received this last week, um, and I'll be getting the submission for payment back on that as soon as I can. Just lastly, it's, it's my understanding, and I understand that I am buying.
Yeah, I said just for the cameras, is that installation?
So, the city, we're gonna be on hook for just a little bit of that.
A little bit of what?
We're going to, I believe it was twelve hundred dollars, we're gonna have to come up with to get them put together and installed.
Per?
No.
Total?
Yeah, project total, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but we have, project total was like eleven thousand seven hundred.
What about storage of the video? Do we have a, uh, some way of storing?
Storage of the video is gonna be done on a terabyte hard drive.
And how does the video get from the cameras to the hard drive?
It is going to automatically upload over wifi when the officer pulls up to the police department. We're done, it's, and that's, that's one thing that I really liked about this camera system, is they were a lot cheaper.
What's the, what's the brand of the camera?
Ten eight. Um, they were a lot cheaper than Digital Alley, than a lot of the other competitors. And I didn't have to buy any add-on to get it to automatically download. Whereas with Digital Alley and Axon, you have to pay for a special module for it to download to your storage device.
You, they, how, uh, one terabyte, do they estimate how much, how, how many hours that will store?
It's, I don't know how many hours I have to ask Mike, that's what we used to use historically for the body cameras. And we would go a year, sometimes a little over a year, before that terabyte hard drive was full. And these can, these videos will, we're going to set them up the same with the way I'm setting up the body cam, to where there's an auto delete, to where if, if it's not a needed video, it's gonna delete after a certain amount of time. I've been working with the attorneys, uh, and setting up a really good policy that's gonna cover us. One, to make sure we have the least amount of videos that we need, but also that we're reducing as much liability to the city as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Committee reports, we don't fully have anything, I don't think, um.
I think I'd like to say something, Scott.
Yes, sir.
I think you've been doing a great job, being upgraded. My comment to you a couple of months ago is only that, at a meeting, we're always talking about spending. And we had gone through such a period of not knowing where we are and what we had with the old regime. That I was talking to Scott, and he and I get along very well, but I said, don't in every meeting ask for something. It's really getting to me, it's really bothering me. Well, it hasn't become off right, because he's trying to upgrade a, a department, I know what he's trying to do. So, I just want, want you to know that my feeling about you is, is very super. I appreciate your, and you did a good job.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so it looks like we're gonna have.
You're still gonna get it.
We've got several bills that need to be. And everybody.
I'm making a motion that we pay our bills. Second?
Okay. Um, and along with the bills, there is an approval of the Phase Three, uh, it's like Derek has submitted, uh, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-three, that's on it. Another bill to pay on the Phase Three.
How many did we have that?
Um, so, contract, I think, ends in A or the contract type. Uh, so, we, we should be getting close, um, but, yeah, at least three more months. So, they've been submitting payoffs each month.
Right, really, before we make that last payment, or while we're going through this, this period, I'd like to see if there's some way that if, if we don't use, if Rulay doesn't patch the roads, I'm gonna specify anything that he's patched from sewer. He's got some damage here that he's gotta fix, and he, he takes care of everything, does a great job. But if we could take that money, and let's say that was fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, and we could use it for paving, I'd like to be able to see that, like, see if there is an opportunity. So, as long as you handle that, I don't care.
Is there any specific areas for the Durango?
Yeah, Castle Garden. Big homes.
Well, there's a ten percent. A routine built-in to the contract.
Okay. Yeah, but the restoration is a line item, and Tony Cobb is, and Alpha is very aware of that. And so, we're not gonna pay him for any restoration he doesn't do. And if we take on a road project that, you know, where he doesn't have to, then we'll just, um, we'll save, we'll save those funds, and then, kind of on the backside, have that looking to redirect to the project.
That's, that's all I'm asking, yes.
I'm not talking about this, so.
Making a motion that we approve the Phase Three sewer project, the application.
I say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have anything else, anybody wants to?
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Scott, getting hungry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't forget Tuesday next month, instead of Monday. There, there is another one up there, I just didn't have my. I should be studying that, maybe, right?
I gotta find it.
I will bring it, you said.
Thank you.
We got, we got so much on this agenda, it's hard to get.
That's what I'm getting to.